Good evening, everybody. We're calling the meeting to order, May twenty, six oh three. The clerk will call the rule.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Ms. LaFave.
Here.
Mr. Romero.
Here.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Here.
Dr. Gloria Caballero. Mr. Wellahan.
Here.
Mr. Colomore.
Here.
And Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All right. All rise, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the public and one nation under God, equal and justice for all.
All right, just so that folks know, pursuant to MGL, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, I hereby am informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live in the city's Communities TV channel. Also, on March twenty-nine, twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three to March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Do we have any members of the public signed up to speak? Either online or in person? Okay, so no member signed up to speak. Well, dive right into new business. I do want to thank everyone for making yourselves available to participate in tonight's special meeting. If I can just get a motion to go out of order to review legal opinion in regards to mayor's role as chair of the school committee and process for filing school committee vacancies.
Make motion.
Motion's been made by Ellie, seconded it by Mr. Wellahan. I think we need to do a roll call because we have one member online.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Colomore.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
I think we also need to suspend the rules to allow Jane from our city solicitor's office, who's here with us tonight virtually, to speak under this order with us. By roll call.
Somebody's got to make a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Gustavo. Roll call.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
See.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
See.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Colomore.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. So just to set the table here so we can dive right in, you know, there's maybe we should have done agenda order number one, but, you know, receiving official resignation, Aaron Brunel has resigned from the school board. You know, so there's a couple of things we want to achieve under this order right now. One, just kind of clarify the process to fill vacancies. I know some of us have been through this before, but it's good to have a little bit of a refresher, make sure we're all on the same page. Our council president is doing the same thing with the council so that we're clear in what the next steps are. But in that process of reviewing, you know, Ellie did bring to my attention, and, you know, we reviewed together, and so I consulted with Jane, and more questions came up, and we found answers, but then more questions came up. And I think we have still some more questions, so I thought it'd be appropriate to be able to just get and this is all that what we've talked about at the last meeting, at our last school board meeting. Just to make sure that we're in line with, we're not just making up practices to make it up, that we're in line with what our charter, what our ordinances, what our school committee policies are. So in the charter, as it read currently, and I guess it was never updated, the city clerk did find, you saw in your packets, did find in Susan Egan's notes, when Susan Egan was a city clerk, change, an amendment to the charter. It had language in there originally that says that the mayor doesn't vote, or, you know.
Doesn't, is
doesn't.
Is not even the, may I?
Not even the chair for that matter. Go ahead.
So when I was looking up the charter, you know, because of the resignation, I was, I looked it up, and during the section that talks about replacing someone, it spoke to the rights of the mayor, the role of the mayor. And according to what was online that are, that everyone can find, it read that the mayor had no voting rights, and that we, as a body, elected a chairperson from those who were voted in by, you know, the city of Holyoke. And then after sharing that, you know, mayor found more information because there was discussion about, this is not right. This is not the most recent.
So the city clerk did find the amendment there that gives the mayor voting rights on the school board, but then also says that he can preside at the meeting at any time, any moment. And the interesting part about that was, okay, great, that was clear. I can be at the meetings, I can vote, I can preside, I can take control, I can chair. But in the charter, it does say that the school board in the first Monday, or Tuesday? Monday of January, first Tuesday of January, the school committee elects its chairman. And so now there's questions as to whether or not, you know, the mayor is really the chair. And our policy, it does stay clearly, we elect the vice chair. And so we're continuing to look into that. I did invite Jane, who's been, you know, very helpful and trying to help doing all the research we can. She hasn't found anything of the such, but Jane, if you want to take the floor and go into a little bit on your opinion.
Yeah, I'm happy to, and I'm sorry, my apologies, I have no idea why my video is not working. But alas, technology. But I appreciate the board having me here, the committee having me here, and I appreciate the introduction, mayor. Thank you. So yes, so we started looking into this last week, and I share the frustration with what we were able to initially find online. So we're working with, just so everybody knows, we are working on having that all updated so it is more readily available to honestly, everybody who is looking at it. So what we have found to date is that, yes, we have our charter that has been changed, was changed back in the early eighties, I believe, the nineteen eighties, to reflect that the mayor can vote on any matter before the school committee, and as the mayor did state, may preside. There's nothing that I have found to date that says that he cannot be the chair of the school committee. So I think that it is fully within the committee's right and authority to elect him or her, as they may be, as chair. I do think that there may have been some confusion, and I completely understand this confusion. There is a statute out there, it's Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-three, which really kind of goes over different charters and plans and different roles that, you know, city council can have in a charter, and if there's a town, if there's an administrator versus a manager versus a mayor. And that is a little, that statute is a little confusing. There's a bunch of sections in the beginning of the statute that are very generalized, and then there are specific references to specific plans, charter plans, that go later in the numbering. And it's, 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 it is confusing because on first blush, you can read it, and it says something very specific. But case law has come out from, that's, you know, decades old, that essentially says that that statute, unless you choose one of the plans that are stated in the later sections of that statute, and this is Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-three, if I didn't say that. Unless you adopt one of those plans that are laid out in Mass. General Laws, forty-three, the entire statute does not apply to you. And so one of those provisions in that chapter is Section thirty-one, which essentially says the mayor shall be the chairman. And shall is, you know, essentially a word that says must, right? Not may, but must. So I think maybe some confusion may have come, and again, I guess I'm speculating here, but that may be a source of confusion, and I think it's a completely reasonable source of confusion because unless you dive into the case law on Mass. General Laws, forty-three, you're not going to see that that only applies to places that have one of those chapter plans in place, or charter plans in place. Holyoke is a special act charter. So we, we're not one of those plans, we haven't adopted one of those plans. We are specifically something that, our charter is under something that we applied to the legislature for. So all that to say, that statute doesn't apply, and I could see where that could be the confusion. The charter, as it is now, supplemented, right, by certain Mass. General Laws that do apply, simply states that the mayor may preside. He doesn't have to, but he may preside. He may vote, he's not required to vote, but he may vote. And any person that is elected to be a chairperson is done by a majority vote of all the members, not just the members present at the meeting, but all members of the school committee. So when you are looking to elect a chairman or woman, then a majority vote of every single member of the school committee is what is needed, regardless of whether they are in attendance or not. So the also, if there seems to be a vacancy or a vacancy arises in the middle of an, in the middle of a term of someone that's been elected to the position, to a position in the school committee, then under our charter, and again, I don't, I have not found anything that has changed this or affected this, or made any sort of reference to this section in our charter, that if there is a vacancy in the midterm, then there must, the mayor must, and this is not a may, it's a must, so required, to call a joint meeting between the city council and the school committee, and a majority vote of, again, all the members of the city council and the school committee, so just not the members present, is required to fill such vacancy. And that vacancy, that position, who was ever voted to fill that position, would then serve until the next election that, or for the remainder of the term of the person that ended up vacating their seat.
Mr. Calamore.
So that is a lot. I know you may have questions, and I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Calamore.
Can I just give you a little breakdown on how this all occurred?
Absolutely.
When I and other members were on the school committee, the mayor was not a member of the school committee. That wasn't his or hers title. They were not on the school committee. Under a mayor, he was very upset over us, the school committee, giving raises and everything else without his permission. We didn't have to give him his permission. It was the school committee's decision to do whatever the budget said, okay? He, as mayor, petitioned the state legislature to make it mandatory that the mayor of the cities and towns shall be chairman of the school committee.
eighteen ninety-six.
He got all the mayors in the Commonwealth to agree with this. And they went to the state legislature and got this law passed. So now, once that law was passed, he or she is now a member of the school committee by law. But the mayor at the time agreed, because of all the work that a mayor has to do within the city of Holyoke or cities or towns, we, as the city, decided, let's have a vice chairman of the school committee perform all duties of the chairman of the school committee. And that's what it was. There was a mistake there, I believe.
Speaking to Mike Calamore, the microphone.
Yeah. It was on the first Monday of the election, we came here as a body to elect a vice chairman. Not a chairman, because we are, the chairman was the mayor of the city. And he or she didn't have the responsibility, not the responsibility, but the workload to do this. So he allowed it to be the vice chairman of the school committee shall do all the duties of this committee. And at that time, we, on the first Monday, we elected a vice chairman, not a chairman, because the mayor was automatically under the law, the chairman of the school committee, under the law passed by the legislature. So we decided that the duties and responsibilities of the vice chair shall do all the work pertaining to the running of the school committee. And that's the way it's been since that time, that on the first Monday, we elect a vice chairman of the school committee. And we'll continue until policy is changed. That's in the policy. We changed that, and that's the way it is, that a member here will be the vice chairman of the school committee until such time as an elected person takes his place.
Thank you, Mr. Calamore. Tensley-Williams?
It started in eighteen ninety-six, but, excuse me. It went into effect October fifteenth, nineteen eighty-two, that the mayor would be the chair. That's what I read. Did we change that? Has it been changed since?
Before I respond, I was going to, I just want to give everybody a chance. So October, I had a follow-up on that.
October fifteenth, nineteen eighty-two, it went into effect. That's what it said, but maybe we could ask Jane, has it changed since that date?
All right, let me get back to that.
So my question was for Jane. It might be me, it might be, you know, but it seems like, I would like the, what is the legal opinion as to the mayor being the chairperson? Because it seems like on two, you gave, there's two different points in the opinion. The opinion says that, under bullet number two, it says the chairperson of the school committee is determined by the majority vote of all members of the school committee. But then you go under the conflict with the Mass. General Law, forty-three, Section thirty-one. So can you share with me, what is the legal decision?
So that's, that's the, and you mentioned October, I did text Anthony earlier today saying, hey, can we go back and review the minutes between October nineteen eighty-two and December nineteen eighty-three? So it sounds like to me that there was a, just like there was a, and thank you, Mr. Calamore, for the, just kind of putting the pieces to the puzzle together. It sounds like to me that, yes, you're right, there was a petition, because our charter got amended, to have the mayor, and we found that, that's in the opinion. But we haven't found, because we just want to confirm, what you just told us about the chairmanship of the mayor, I just want to confirm that, we need to see it, and we're trying to find it. So I'm hoping that we can review the minutes of October around that timeframe to see if we could find the language so that Jane and the city clerk can update what's online accordingly, so that this confusion never happens again. Assuming that it's there, and you're right, and it exists. But to your point, if it doesn't, technically, we're voting in a chair and not a vice chair. Am I, Jane, am I offline?
Hello, so, yeah, just to speak to that. So the change that happened in October of nineteen eighty-two, it is included in the opinion, and that is that the mayor shall be a member of the school committee. It doesn't say chair, just that he shall be a member of the school committee and has the right to vote on all issues. So the, the mayor can vote, and he can be, or he's a member of the school committee, but it doesn't require him to be a chair. And then that second section, where I talk about how the language is in conflict with General Laws, forty-three, Section one, that is, I put that in there because that's how I think there could have been a source of some confusion in people reading into that. And that does not apply to us, if you see on my third page of the opinion, that actually does not apply because we have, because we're a special act charter and not one of the charters enumerated as a plan in that statute. So as of right now, until we find anything different, which we are definitely working diligently on, the mayor had me take a look at the nineteen ninety-three Reform Act, which was in, also an ax that we took a look at, and I didn't see anything that would include the mayor as, or requiring the mayor to be a chair in there, actually no real language as to appointment or an election of a chair at all. And it didn't really take any of the authority away from the mayor, not really. It just, it did not take any authority away from the mayor with respect to any, you know, approval of any orders or resolutions that we have on our charter either. So at this point, as of today, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, all that we have found is our charter, which was amended in nineteen eighty-two to include that the mayor shall be
A voting member.
A member of the school committee and may vote, but nothing requiring him to be chair, except for the fact that when he is present, he can chair, he can preside over the meeting. So I think, as of today, we are at a point where the opinion of the law department is that the mayor is not required to be chair, but you may vote him so, if you would like to.
Any other questions for Jane? Mr. Wellahan and Mildred?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so I mean, there's this, we're going back to our, our rules school committee that mentions a vice chair, right? And I'm assuming the charter doesn't mention a vice chair. So what trumps what, you know, where did that vice chair come in? You know, do we need to amend the charter to have a vice chair? That's, that's my question. I had the charter at my house, I didn't bring it here. I'm not sure whether the charter, either it's in original form or amended, mentions a, a school chair. It probably just leaves it vague in terms of the makeup of the board, which has changed, which has changed anyways. But, yeah, so that's really my, my question, whether our rules are in play, or do we have to go by the charter?
That was a question for Jane? Jane, did you get?
Would you like me to answer that, or wait to the, I did hear it. Would you like me to answer that one, or wait to the next comment?
Mildred?
So for one, real concerning, because changes that were made were not even updated into the charter, so that it's more up to date. But remember the conversation that we kind of had? There were more changes that were made in ninety-five, after the strike, and that's where it talks more about the role of the vice chair and the chair. So was, did anybody find those changes? So that's, some of the concerns is when votes were made, it wasn't really transferred over, so.
Jane?
I'm here. So are you saying that they were changes made within the city of Holyoke, or changes made at a state level in nineteen ninety-five?
Well, there were votes and changes that were made in nineteen ninety-five, and I get to my assumption, and Mr. Colomore would know more, I'm assuming, is that that's when the role of the vice chair and removing powers from the chair and was then put in place, and that was after the strike. Do you remember that, Mr. Colomore?
Mr. Calamore?
I don't remember, I'm sorry, I don't remember ninety-five, that date you gave me, ninety-five. But in eighty-two, when the mayor petitioned the state legislature to make it all mayors shall be members of the school committee. It doesn't say chair, it says members of the school, a member of the school committee. So immediately, the school committees throughout the Commonwealth said, because of the duties and responsibilities of a mayor running the water department, I mean, Board of Public Works and other departments, they felt as though we, as a body, could name a vice chair to run all our meetings and duties and responsibilities of the vice chair is spelled out. So it was in nineteen eighty-two that this happened. And as far as I know, it's still in, it's still in effect. On January first of every year, not every year, but election year, we met and we elected a vice chair, not, not a chair. And included in that, the mayor had a vote. He or she could vote on any matters pertaining to the duties of the school committee. And that's what's been going on since nineteen eighty-two, that we allow the vice chair to run all our meetings and duties and responsibilities. And that, and that's what is boggling a lot of people here. And the first Monday, we elect a vice chair to do the duties and responsibilities that the mayor had.
Ms. Wilson?
I think Mr. Romero was first. Did Jerry speak?
No, he didn't.
All right, sorry. And then I also want to make sure that Dr. All right, sorry, and then I also want to, um, make sure that, um, Dr. um, Jadalet Rivera Cologne, I don't see her being seen, so if she's raising her hand, we can't tell if she wants to enter the conversation, so I, I, I'm.
Track that for us.
So if someone can look into that, um, so, um, I'm wondering if we are interpreting the may as a, as a will. So it read that you may be chair, the mayor may be chair. I'm wondering, in generally, did, that, was that accepted? In lieu of having the data in our present form from ninety-five, I'm wondering if it was interpreted as the mayor, you know, will be chair. But then, something happened, so then we have the vice chair, because the vice chair, you know, can run it, that sounded much more logical in my mind before I said it aloud, I'm sorry. But I'm wondering.
That's why we're here.
I know, I, I just, I mean, I, when I look at our rules, speak to electing a vice chair.
Policy does, yeah.
The policy speaks, and so there, we're missing a piece. We are missing an important piece that lends itself to when, because the charter doesn't speak to the vice chair position. It speaks that you may, the mayor may run things, so where's that piece? And without that piece, what is our path forward tonight, is my question?
Jane?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I appreciate, um, the statement that it sounds clear in your head, because sometimes that just is how people are, and that's how, that happens to me too, so I appreciated you saying that. Um, so, I think, um, there's nothing statutorily that says, um, any, like, sort of requirement about a vice chair, except for when you're getting into regional school districts, which we are not a part of. Um, so, they're considering the absence of that, and there's nothing in our charter that speaks to a vice chair. Um, and the statute, um, under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, allows, um, the school committee really to set, you know, its own procedures, um, and rules, I don't think there's anything prohibitive. Um, and I don't see anything prohibitive of having a vice chair. Um, so I think that the school committee is on solid ground with that, that they can elect a vice chair. Um, and it would be probably beneficial, um, in the case of an absence of the chair, to have a vice chair who could preside. Um, so I think that, again, I haven't seen anything from, um, you know, anything in nineteen ninety-five, but that was probably shortly after to, also some of the changes from school reform, um, that were done in nineteen ninety-three, and you started really seeing those implemented probably in nineteen ninety-five, after, you know, a little bit of a waiting period. So I would say that, at this point, based upon everything we know, the, um, the mayor, again, there's no reason why you can't elect the mayor as the chair, it just, he is not automatically the chair um, under our charter as amended. Um, there's nothing that would apply to the city of Holyoke under Mass General Laws that specifically requires him to be chair, but again, that doesn't mean he cannot. Um, and again, there's nothing that says that you may not, or you are required to elect a vice chair, but I think it's probably prudent um, to have that position, so I think, again, the school committee is on solid ground there. Um, and I would continue, um, to say that we are going to continue to look into this, because I love certainty too, um, and right now, we don't have anything that, um, or I have not seen anything in the general laws or acts that specifically says um, one way or the other with a vice chair, so we'll continue to look into that and absolutely update as, as we see. Um, I share the frustration again by, um, the school committee member, um, about making sure our, um, online resources are up to date. That has been a, um, pet project of mine at the city as well. Um, so, that is something we are working diligently on, um, to make sure we have the most current and up-to-date information out there for the public to, to have. Um, so I think all of that, um, I think that answers all of the questions, um, but I'm not sure if I have missed something from somebody.
Ms. Wilson has a follow-up, and then we'll do Mr. Callamore.
So you, Jane, you didn't really answer my question, you said we have the right to, you know, um, vote in a vice chair. I am asking your legal opinion, it, right now, based upon all the data we have, we, as a school committee, are we voting in a chairman? A chairperson for our committee? We know we have the right to vote in a vice chair. But my question is, based on the data, or the lack thereof at this moment, who is our chairperson, and are we voting tonight for a chairperson?
If you have not elected a chairperson as of this year, then I would say you need to elect a chairperson. That is my legal opinion.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hang on, so we got some comments from Tinsley Williams?
Yes, um.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Callamore, I, go ahead.
I, I don't know if you've
Then Tinsley Williams.
Heard everything I said, but, uh, in the beginning here, when the mayor was elected a member of the school committee by the state legislature. By the state legislature, they passed that the mayors shall be a member of the school committee.
That's right.
He or she has, and he or she has the right to say, because of the duties and responsibilities of the mayor, I believe you people, as a body, should let, elect a vice chair to, to run the meetings. And it's been that way all along, that the mayor says, I want a vice chair to run all the meetings. And that's why we vote on January first, uh, that it shall be the vice chair to run all duties and responsibilities of the school committee.
So just, just before, Rosalie, if I could just respond to Mr. Callamore really quick, that, like, we absolutely get that and understand that, what we're trying to do is find the language with that amendment in there, and right now, we haven't found it. Um, and so, you know, that leaves us kind of in a limbo here. Now, I do think that in the last thirty-plus years, you know, it, something has to be out there, because there's no way that our school board could have met and practiced this without somebody calling it out. Um, so, you know, I, I do want us to continue to, uh, dig and explore, actually, I think we're gonna look at some old meeting minutes, just to, you know, refresh our memories here from that time. Um, I know the question was asked, what do we do? You know, there's, before I share it, um, I mean, I have three thoughts in my mind, but I just want to make sure I get to everybody in the conversation before I share what my one Joshua Garcia, you know, opinions are, and depending on what the body wants to do, um, I'll support. Um, but that's, that's what we're trying to get to the bottom, is what, the language currently, as we know it, says, we elect the chair. So how does the mayor come in and say, you can elect the vice chair? When it says there clearly, you can elect the chair? If there is information out there that says otherwise, that's, we're trying to find that, so we can be clear.
First thing, I have to find out. What did, what did the state legislature approve?
Right.
Pertaining to this? Does it say the mayor shall be, uh, chairman of the school committee, or whether he is a member of the school committee?
So in your packet, that, that was the opinion of the information that Jane, that everybody digged and found. You'll see the amendment to the charter that says that the mayor can participate and vote, and also presides when he's present, or whatever, but it, it doesn't say anywhere, at least from what we've saw, that he's also the chair, the chairman. Uh, but it doesn't mean that maybe immediately after someone said, and they, they submitted another, you know what I mean, so we still want to look?
Which, which that mayor did.
Right.
Which that mayor did, when he, when he became a, a member of the board, he suggested to this body, because of my duties and responsibilities, I believe you should name a vice chair to run the school committee. And it, it was, it was his wishes to have this done. It wasn't the school committee's wishes, it was the mayor's wishes that this be done to run the meetings properly. It wasn't the state legislature or anywhere else, it, it was this body that made the decision that the vice chair shall run all the meetings, because of the duties and responsibilities of the mayor.
Ms. Tinsley Williams, and then Mr. Willehand. Oh, sorry, Jane, hold on, let me, uh, get some points out of Tinsley Williams.
First of all, the mayor.
No worries, sir.
The mayor cannot be everywhere at the same time, so, we do need a vice chair. Um, in case the mayor can't be here, we really need to be able to go on with the meetings. So, and the mayor should still keep his power that he has, we're not saying taking any power from you. But we do need a vice chair, because you can't be everywhere at once, that will give you a break too. So that's just my, my little.
Just to be clear with everyone, this isn't necessarily about, this is, this is making sure that we're practicing what the, the writing and the law says, so if we're gonna elect a vice chair tonight, are we really electing a vice chair, or now that we know this, should we be really electing a chairman, and that's what we're trying to clarify?
Table it in.
Because, uh, Mr. Willehand, then Ellie Wilson, you want to let Jane, okay. Stay with that, Jane?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so yes, so I just wanted to respond to the one, uh, question about what the language specifically says from that nineteen eighty-two amendment.
Okay.
And the language specifically says, the mayor shall be a member of the school committee with the right to participate in all discussions and the right to vote on all issues. When present, the mayor may also preside at any session of the school committee. So I think probably, again, and I'm, I'm presuming or assuming or presuming here, that when that was done in nineteen eighty-two, and the mayor, as he shall now be a member of the school committee and he attends, he may preside. So he was probably saying that mayor, uh, again, I wasn't present, so I'm just thinking po, possibilities here. He said, elect a vice chair, because even when I'm present and I could preside and you may be looking to me, I may be having too many other responsibilities, that a vice chair is probably a good idea. And I think that holds truth at weight. Um, I do think that a vice chair is absolutely, um, a prudent idea. And, um, again, nothing against the mayor here, as, as, um, he knows and as we've stated, or he has said, it's, it's just making sure we have um, the language correct, and making sure that the school committee knows exactly its rights, um, and responsibilities and roles. Um, so, I think under your own rules, you know, you have that ability to elect a vice chair, and I think you should. And I think you should keep a vice chair, um, but I also think that you should, um, take this time to also elect a chairperson, just considering the language that we have now. Or you could table it as the other, um, member did state, so I just wanted to, um, put those options out there.
All right, here's where we are, I got Mr. Willehand, then Mr. Callamore, and then, uh, I got someone online there.
Daddy. Doctor Cologne.
Doctor Cologne, all right, so that's the order, Mr. Willehand.
I'll say something new.
Callamore and then you.
I know, we don't want to keep rehashing the same. Statements over and over.
We're here, I want to make sure every member understands.
I'm gonna say something new, okay, new, okay, so, Ernie Prue was the mayor in nineteen eighty-two, okay, so, just all the, just to put it in perspective, okay, so he, he was the mayor, okay, in nineteen eighty-two. You know, in, in terms of past practice versus what's written in, in the law, so we're, what's written in the law, that's what we're trying to ascertain here, versus past practice. Just to give an example, the, the Hoyoke City Council, for decades, decades and decades and decades, elected a president each year, even though the charter says you elect a president every two years. Okay, so for decades and decades and decades, the city council was, was doing, was electing a, a chair, a, a president, and uh, not according to the charter, okay, so, it doesn't, so the fact that we may be, not be doing something, you know, according to the charter, isn't out of the realm of reason, thank you.
Mr. Callamore?
Just to clarify something here, uh, I don't know who was talking, but the mayor is a member of the school committee. And whether he's present or not, if he's sitting in that chair, he is a member, and he can, he can vote.
That's right, that's clear.
Yes.
Right. He can, he can vote, he don't, uh, absentee isn't a criteria here. The, the mayor can vote on the election of a vice chair.
Ms. Wilson?
It was actually Jadalet first.
Was she first, okay, doctor. Jadalet Rivera Cologne, floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, given that we're not gonna be able to solve this today.
Correct.
And we're, because we don't have all the information at hand. Could we, in order to make sure that we're still in compliance with the information that we do know, could we have a vote for chairman and vice chair, um, tonight? To keep it the way that we've had it so far, and then as soon as we get all the other information, we can um, revise what we're doing, I guess, I do appreciate the conversation, and we need to make sure that we're operating according to the charter. I just don't think that we have the necessary information to make the best informed decision, but we also have a lot of work to do, so we definitely need someone to be leading that work. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
That's where I was heading as well, um, in the same venue, that tonight, we should be electing a chairperson, as well as a vice chairperson. And, uh, my recommendation is that we continue with the mayor, um, for this, um, calendar year, uh, being our chairperson. Um, that would be my recommendation, and then move to follow with electing a vice chair. And we would be, and then that would allow legal to continue to look into things and bring things to us. Um, and until Janu, you know, when we, in January, would be electing a new individual, possibly, potentially, to either position. I would like to.
Wait, 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 before you make that motion, let's, you know, we got, we'll get there. Um, I think we have a, I wanna, you know, I think, you know, seeing what went down in Springfield, I want to make sure all my members here are comfortable and happy, got their concerns, spoke their voices, you know, as, as much as possible, because this is critical, we're gonna be voting, making some important votes, we're transitioning to local control.
Yeah.
State's watching us, I want us to make sure that we got, we're on our game here. So I really, truly, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate everybody's patience in this, and we don't have a billion other things after this, this is, this is a special meeting specifically for this. We'll be done, Rosalie, go ahead, floor is yours.
So don't make a motion in other words, I wanted to make a motion that we choose a, um,
It's, it's on our agenda.
Chair and a vice chair tonight, and I make a motion that, uh, Ms.
It's, it's on our agenda to elect a vice chair.
Not yet.
So that.
Okay, I do.
You, you have something, Mildred? The favor, floor is yours.
Thank you, also, if we can get, um,
Thank you, also if we can get um, who can go back on the archives for the school committee meeting minutes.
Yep.
Starting in nineteen eighty-two, going into past education reform to see any votes of the school committee that led. To different sections of the policy, which may have not been updated or um, moved over. You know, if it was something that required legislation and it just wasn't updated into the charter. But I think on the school end, we need to do the investigation and then if Jane can look on it on the city side. That's just my opinion.
You have something else, Ms. Wilson? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, okay, I had, so remember I made reference to, did anybody else had anything else to? I had three things that I was thinking. And when you made the comment about electing a vice chair and a chair, you mean like a vice chair slash chair?
No, I meant tonight, I would like us to vote for a chairperson because Jane is saying that right now. According to what is written that we know of, we do not have a chairperson. And then also elect a vice chair. And I said, my recommendation, if I'm allowed to say this, would be that we maintain what our operating process has been. And we elect the mayor as the chairperson um, to maintain our process right now. Um, and then we elect a vice chair.
So that, oh, okay, we got another one, so before I, go ahead, Mr. Calamore. I mean, uh, Mr. Wellahan, you have something else, Ms. Calamore? Okay, Mr. Wellahan first.
I'll be quick, yeah, I mean, just a follow up on Mrs. um, Wilson. I mean, the only thing in front of me right now that I have in writing is on who could chair this committee is is the mayor. You know, he shall, or he he may, right? So I'm going off that in terms of, the only thing as of right now, I look at my watch that I have in writing on who can preside over this body. Is that that amendment to the charter in nineteen eighty-two, so I would stick with that, okay? And then point two is our our own policy says we can adopt, we can elect a vice chair. Okay, so one, the charter gives us the authority, gives the mayor the authority to to preside. Number one, and number two is our policies slash rules say that we can elect a vice chair. So just to um, just to um, agree with Mrs. Wilson, you know, I think we should just stick with that as of now. And then if the law department can find anything that contradicts that, we can always revisit that. So that's not a motion, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Calamore.
Clarification, everything. The mayor, according to the law that was passed in eighty-two by the legislature. That the mayor shall be a member of the school committee. Period. It doesn't give he can be vice chair, he could be secretary, he could be anything he wanted to. It doesn't say that in the, it only says he or she may. Shall or shall be a member of the school committee. Doesn't say whether he's going to be chairman or not chairman. It doesn't say that at all, it just says he is a member of the school committee. And.
No, it's just, that's fine, no, we understand that, Mr. Calamore, and thank you for um, reclarifying the point. Um, so I think that here's the, I think that here's the consensus that I might be hearing. I don't think we'll be, at least from now to January second, we won't be out of line if we. Elect our vice chair, because it's in our policy. And at least that'll give us between now and our normal voting day in January, because it does say. That the school board meets on that day to elect the chair. To look into the minutes, find some information somewhere that says otherwise. And if there is, great, then we continue business as usual, nothing changes. My only concern about right now, if we do vote a chair right now and we later find out that. We, you know, Mr. Calamore is absolutely right, we find some data and we kind of, you know, then then we have to kind of go back and untangle that somehow. So elect the vice chair. Assuming this body wants when we get to it. Vice, and we just continue what we've normally been doing, because we won't be in conflict with anything. That's that's what I'm hearing. Did you want to have some comments, LaFave? You lost it? Doctor Yadi Let Rivera Cologne, no questions. Did you want to say something else, Ms. Wilson? You want to make the motion to go to agenda item election of vice chair?
Sorry.
Uh, Jane.
Yes, so I was just gonna put forth a recommendation on the chair issue, um, the vote of the chair. You can um, whoever wants to make the motion um, can make some pretty specific language. That um, the vote to elect a chair um, can be interim. Until any such further additional information is discovered. Um, and then if such information is discovered, then there will, there will be a a second um. Vote or a a operation of law, then someone else is the chair, but we can do, you can do an interim. Um, language, which would have the same effect as a permanent for this time.
I see Ms. Wilson, I see Tensley-Williams. Just to read the policy here that we have with the school board, it does say, in the absence of the vice chairperson at any meeting thereafter. The committee shall elect in the manner outlined, a vice chairperson pro tem.
Yep.
Pro tem.
Yep.
That's a new word I learned today. So that's that's to your point, Jane, interim. Was it those, Wilson, Ms. Wilson?
So we cannot elect chair, it's not on our agenda this evening. So that's something that we would have to uh, wait till our next meeting to have it added to the agenda, um, just to clarify.
Assuming we want to.
Assuming that we want to um, you know, do an interim. That's something we cannot do this evening based on the fact it's not on our agenda.
For chair, I do have vice chair.
Correct, so I would like to make the motion that we elect a vice chair.
All right, so we have a motion to elect a vice chair from Ellie Wilson, seconded by Rosalie Tensley-Williams. Um, let's do, oh, a roll call, and actually not even a roll call, the chair, the clerk is going to say your name and you spit out the name of the person.
You have to accept.
Oh, do the vote, okay, we're going to vote to accept the motion, roll call.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams. Doctor Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
All right, so you got to refresh my memory, do we, do we nominate candidates? Do I just throw a name out when your name is called or?
So now, we're closing out with that agenda item and we're going to move to agenda item number. So first we have, are we going to officially accept the resignation and then move to the election of vice chair?
Let's, let's go back to the order of our agenda.
So. The motion will be to return to the order of the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to return to the order, the order of the agenda.
Motion's made by Ellie Wilson, seconded by Mildred LaFave, uh, clerk, roll call.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
See.
Doctor Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
All right, can we get a motion to receive the official resignation of?
The motion to receive and accept the official resignation of vice chair, school committee at large, Ms. Erin Brunel.
Seconded.
Made, LaFave, seconded by Tensley-Williams, clerk, roll call.
Mayor Garcia.
Unless there's, there's no discussion, assuming there's no discussion.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams. Doctor Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
And so that seat, you know, has been officially, just so folks know, has been submitted to the clerk. Now it's official um, with the submission of the resignation to the clerk's office. We we did already went over with Jane present, what the process is, it's clear. I will let you know by the next meeting that scheduled dates, I am working with um, uh, the council president. So that we can coordinate dates that work for as best we can for everybody. Um, and we'll post the role too, in case folks are interested in the public to want to um, throw their name in and potentially be. Voted in um, to fill in this vacant role. Um, but with that said. Do I have a motion?
No motion now, you go to the election of vice chair.
We are now going.
He will do the roll call and you just spill out a name.
Put a name, are there any candidates?
You don't do it that way.
Okay, all right. All right, so we're going into a election of the vice chair, clerk's gonna roll when they call your name. You name the candidate you want as the vice chair.
Mayor Garcia.
Mildred LaFave.
Ms. LaFave.
Mildred LaFave.
Mr. Romero.
Mildred LaFave.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Mildred LaFave.
Doctor Rivera Cologne.
Mildred LaFave.
Mr. Wellahan.
This is LaFave.
Mr. Calamore.
LaFave.
Ms. Wilson.
Mildred LaFave.
So by unanimous, we have unanimous vote to elect Mildred LaFave as pro tem. Pro tem between now and.
That's all in capitals.
First meeting in January.
All capital letters.
Critical, because I know we could have put this on your agenda for our next regular meeting, but we have a regular scheduled meeting. With the commissioner and and we do not want to miss a step. And so Mildred, if she isn't going to do it now, she'll be following up with everybody on um, on a point. Mildred, are you going to, you're going to serve on that committee, I'm assuming?
So in regards to where it says the next changes to subcommittee appointments, technically, everybody's still on their same committees.
Good, okay.
The only thing is, is the local subcontrol um, local, why, why am I saying?
Local control subcommittee.
Local control subcommittee um, with the absence from Ms. Brunel. I will take in in her seat, but I will also be appointing Mayor Garcia to also serve on it. So it'll be myself, Mayor Garcia, Doctor Yadi Let Rivera Cologne. Doctor Caballero Roca and Mr. Romero.
Can we go five members on a committee, on a subcommittee?
Um, so on that one, you're coming in as mayor.
Okay.
Um, to be a part. Um, I know that the subcommittee says four members. So that's why when we're talking about, it's so specific in our policies. And that's why, again, it's going back to really looking at our section B policies. To really make them specific to Holyoke and what we can, we're we're doing, right? And that's the importance of that retreat, because it's about looking at those, just those specific things, because that's part of your operational duties. Right? Um, the joint committee should have, that's another thing, it should have always been three. That's that, that's the history of it and it's kind of finding out when was that voted on. So that's why I asked also for the meeting minutes from the school committee. When you created the joint city council school committee, where the city would would um, assign three members. And then the school committee would assign three members um, to work together, but right now we have four. And the city has three, so there's a bit of confusion there. So the local control subcommittee is kind of like an advisory council that was created um, to create this transition plan. And we can go look at our policies on advisory committees. Uh, advisory committees to the school committee. They may be created by the school committee to serve as task forces for special purposes or to providing continuing consultation of particular area of activity. So technically, this, that committee was technically created for the sole purpose of transitioning out of receivership. It's not a permanent.
Okay, got it.
Um, so it's kind of like a task force advisory, but you're doing the job of creating the plan so that the committee can start transitioning out.
Mr. Wellahan. And then Yadi Let Rivera Cologne. Mr. Wellahan.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, any, you know, subcommittee or, you know, there's a term in the language, you know. Those those committees still have to follow the open meeting law.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Doctor Yadi Let Rivera Cologne.
The only concern that I have is is that if we are five and we have to invite someone to speak at a particular topic. Like we've done before with finance or um, policy, then we would have quorum of the school committee. That's the, that's the only thing that worries me about having five members.
I don't, I don't have to be on it. I mean, I I want to be on it, but.
What I can say is that if and when we do do that, I'd be more than willing to step aside and sit in the, in the audience. Um, and observe the meeting and you do not count me into the. Um, but I think it's really important that you have your mayor there, you have the ones that were initially appointed to. Um, technically, the vice chair wasn't asked, it was a recommendation by the state that the vice chair is there. Um, it's not something where it was, it had to be, that's not what we had decided when we created this task force. It was who wanted to be a part of it, um, and we wanted to make sure that we had a diverse crew on it. Um, yes, they are all new members in receivership, but it was giving them the opportunity. And and Doctor Rivera Cologne has outshone herself and she's doing an amazing job.
Ms. Wilson.
So, um, you know, I appreciate you sharing that information, but if you're sitting at the table, being part of the committee, just stepping outside. I don't think, I, so I think you're like an. You know, I agree with, you know, Doctor Yadi Let Rivera Cologne that um, we should not have five members of our school committee be at the table. That the vice chair can sit in the audience along with any other school committee members. And that if there's something that needs to be addressed, we can then make a motion to allow the person to come speak. So with, so I would not be recommending the vice chair continue on that subcommittee. If we are adding another member who is also a school committee and mayor, that I would say that the mayor would then join. And that, just like any other member, we can sit in the audience.
That's fine, what do you think?
I agree.
Okay, so you won't be on the subcommittee.
Nope, I'll be more than happy to sit right there and watch you all, continue on the work and I'll support you and root you on.
Now, to be clear, does that policy say that if we're switching committees in the middle of the year like this, we all got to vote? Or you just assign it?
So the new appointments, we would vote on this, um, who's, even though it's a task, that's an advisory council, it's not really a subcommittee. We accept the nominations of the subcommittee um, for our specific committees, but this is a, just a task force. So it's just a, a specific group that is working on some, something that's, just like we have advisory councils for, for special education, we wouldn't.
Okay, so what do we have as a motion then? Is there a motion?
There is none.
I'm officially on this subcommittee?
You're officially on it, congratulations.
Madam Wilson. All right, I am going to pass my gavel over to the vice chair. Because it says, it says may preside over the meetings, but don't have to. And Jane, thank you so much um, for all your guidance, your help, your, 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 I know I I put a, a tall order on you when you were busy doing other things. Obviously, this is important, but you know, I appreciate your um, due diligence and your, your willingness to step up and help out when we need it.
I would like to make a motion to, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second? We have a second, all those, oh, roll call.
Sorry.
Mayor Garcia.
See.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Si, senor.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Si.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. All right, motion passes, meeting is adjourned at 7:14 PM. Thank you, everyone, and see you on the 28th for our regular meeting.